The TV doesn't seem to be ready. Okay. So I'll call a regular meeting of the City Commission to order for Wednesday, January 6, 2016. At 6 o'clock, we held an executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660.2A to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, and 2H to consult with counsel concerning legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation and/or litigation likely to be filed. You want to call the roll?
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Here.
And Mayor Holliday?
Here. Okay, if you'll stand and join me in flex.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, moving right along, we have the election of the commission president for 2016. And pursuant to the city charter, we have to do this by secret ballot. But I would open the floor for nominations, and I'm going to nominate Commissioner Rocky Smith for commission president. Are there any other nominations? And hearing none, I will close that. If you'll write down your decision and put it in here, then we can go forward.
Do I have to write it down?
Yes, you do.
Yes, please.
This is a public record that she'll have forever.
Just pass it down, please.
What was that?
Something out there.
And it's Rocky Smith.
We thought it would be nice to have the commission president for your last.
My last. I had to think about it for a while.
So, we're going to do the oath of office. Mayor Lorraine, or Judge Lorraine McNeese.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. Is this on? I, Rocky Smith Jr.
I, Rocky Smith Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and of the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And that I will do to, will to the best of my ability.
And I will to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of commission president.
Faithfully perform the duties of commission president.
Of Oregon City during my incumbency thereof.
Of Oregon City during my incumbency thereof.
Congratulations.
You've been commission president once, right? Do they have the?
Thank you.
Cards. You just have the cards. I know, why do I take all my cards?
They give them to you at your turn.
No, I still have them.
No speech.
Speech, speech. Okay, so the next one's mine.
Maybe I get to sit over there.
Hmm? Well, I guess it's now. Since you're officially taking the oath of office, do we have a, have we got the signs?
I do have his.
Huh?
I do have his because he was commission president before.
Once, well, yeah, once, last, the last.
While you go do that, I'll do this, and then. So first, the commission appointments. Unless somebody is unhappy with what they've been doing for the last year, I'm going to pretty much reappoint everybody to what they've been doing so far. So, Metro Policy Advisory Committee, Commissioner Mengeleberg, and the alternate is Commissioner Polly. South Fork Water Board is myself, Commissioner Shaw, and Commissioner Smith. For the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, myself, the alternate is Commissioner Mengeleberg. And the Sea Force Subcommittee is Commissioner Mengeleberg as well. Regional Wastewater Advisory Committee, it's myself. Downtown Oregon City Association Board, Commissioner Carroll Polly. Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition. Now, this is one thing I wondered, if somebody, Carroll Polly is the representative, is somebody willing to be an alternate on the Heritage Area Coalition?
No.
So Commissioner Shaw will be the alternate. And Katie, can you make note of that? Okay. Willamette Falls Legacy Project Liaison is myself and Commissioner Carroll Polly. Clackamas Heritage Partners, Commissioner Rocky Smith. Oregon City Tourism Council, Commissioner Rocky Smith. Citizen Involvement Committee, Commission Liaison, Commissioner Shaw. Library Edition Building Project Committee, Commission Liaison, Mr. Shaw. And I have been appointed, or will soon be appointed by the governor, to the Willamette Falls LOX Task Force, the state task force.
And I've been going to the Willamette Falls Working Group.
Yes.
I mean, LOX Working Group.
And the LOX Working Group will continue to be working their mission, it's just going to change a little bit.
Okay. All right.
So, the next set is the appointments of the boards and commissions. So I'm appointing William Gifford to the Budget Committee for a four-year term, January 1st, 2016, to December 31st, 2019. Appointment of Christopher Cook to the Urban Renewal Budget Committee for a four-year term, January 1st, 2016, to December 31st, 2019. Reappointment of DA Hildebrand, the at-large position, and Scott Will Edwards, the resident position, to the Library Board for a four-year term, January 1st, 2016, to December 31st, 2019. Reappointment of Sean Dakler and Roger Fowler-Thiess. An appointment of Mike Mitchell to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for a three-year term of January 1st, 2016, to December 31st, 2018. Appointment of Christopher Cook to the remainder of an existing term of January 1st, 2014, to December 31st, 2016, on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Reappointment of Bill Clark, and appointment of Dorothy Dalzru to the Natural Resources Committee for a three-year term, January 1st, 2016, to December 31st, 2018. Appointment of Trent Warrenes to the remainder of an existing term, January 1st, 2015, to December 31st, 2017, on the Natural Resources Committee. Reappointment of Henry McAtroth and Robert Mahoney, and appointment of Jonathan David to the Transportation Advisory Committee for a three-year term, January 1st, 2016, to December 31st, 2018. And appointment of Josh Planton to the Tourism Grant Committee for a four-year term, January 1st, 2016, to December 31st, 2019. So that takes care of the appointments. And that moves us on to citizen comment. And why don't you guys change seats?
What? Sorry, Brad.
Didn't sign up for this.
You can stay there, though.
Oh, great, I wouldn't be down here anymore.
I don't know, maybe we should have you guys sit together. So now we are on to citizen comment. Is there, are there any citizen comments?
It's William Gifford.
Father Time?
It never gets old.
Welcome to the club, William.
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. I wanted to give a couple of kudos tonight. One is Monday night, I was watching on TV, or on the internet, the proceeds of the Citizen Involvement Committee, or council, whatever it's called now. And Scott Archer made a presentation on what all his department does, and I thought it was inspirational. It was really in-depth, it was very professional, it was, it continues to inspire me about the quality of leadership that we have on our, on our staff. And I just wanted to thank, thank Scott for his presentation. And last night was the Hillendale Neighborhood Association meeting. Unfortunately, it was the same time as the newly forming, I was going to say nation, but I didn't want to blow that away, so, the newly forming Oregon City Parks Foundation meeting last night. And I want people to remember that, it's still being formed, but I went to the Neighborhood Association meeting, and we had our police liaison of Spencer Roads. And Spencer was asked to give an in-depth report as to police work that is being done, most specifically in our neighborhood. Chris Wadsworth prepared some statistics that just absolutely blew everybody out of the water in the, in the quality, and the depth, and the, and the, and the layout and everything. And Spencer just went to, to great effort, and did a very, very fine job of presenting all the, all the wonderful things that our police department does, and I just wanted to say that's another, it's another fine job. I'm, I am so proud of the city, I could just bust. And a thank you to whoever the technical person was that finally got Wi-Fi going again in this city, for, for the peanut gallery, that's greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thanks, William.
Thanks, William.
Is that it? And then I'm going to take this opportunity to say that the city has just gone through probably the biggest set of emergencies that we've had in quite some time, probably since the '96 floods. And I want to say how impressed and proud I am of everyone who works in this city, even the folks that weren't directly involved in the emergency operations center, or directly involved with something having to do with the Forage Edge or Barkley, Berryhill situation. There are folks in the city that, those folks had to be away from their regular jobs, and other people stepped in to fill in, and we continue to do the work of the city even as we were dealing with this situation. And so, everybody from senior staff all the way down deserves to be commended for the way the city stepped up and handled this, this process. We want to thank especially the folks from the Red Cross. Paula, what's her last name? Come on. Anyway, Paula and her folks from the Red Cross, there were probably close to 50 volunteers from all across the country. And a lot of people don't know this, but Red Cross volunteers typically pay their own transportation to a site. The Red Cross does house them and feed them while they're here, but these are all volunteer folks who step up from all across the country. We met people from all over the country that were here helping our citizens get through this situation. And then the folks from the county, Nancy Bush, the county's emergency manager, the county's housing folks, even up to our state and federal officials who, and their staffs who pitched in and are helping us ongoing in this, in this thing. So I just want to, and especially also to, to Commissioner Smith and to Commissioner Shaw. I was never comfortable being there by myself, so I made sure that we had another commissioner at all the EOC meetings, so that it wasn't just one person trying to make decisions for the entire commission. When we did have to make an official decision, we did bring the commission together for one emergency meeting. So just thanks to all of you for stepping up. So, if anybody else has anything to add, feel free.
As much as it pains me, but I think we need to recognize Mayor Holliday for all of his efforts through this, too. So, thank you, Mayor Holliday, for representing the city as we went through this, so.
Thank you.
And I would also like to add, all the community organizations came together, too, and the nonprofits, and just the citizens, everybody just band together and stepped up to try to help. So, we have a great city with great leadership, and staff, and, and community organizations.
Well, thank you, Carol, because I, I did miss somebody, and actually a couple of organizations that we do have to thank, and that's the Oregon City Rotary Club and the Rotary Club Foundation. And there's an organization called the Oregon City Emergency Relief Fund, which is donated to and administered by a group of the local churches. And they've been doing this for like 15 years, and it's basically a situation where if there's a domestic violence issue, or some other kind of issue where somebody needs housing for a night or two until they can get into the system, they can get a voucher from the police department, and they put them up at the rivershore. And we use that to kind of close out the shelter and keep the families that still needed housing for a short period of time. So, those, all those folks really stepped up and, and helped us out in this situation. Go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
I also want to thank the school district, and.
Thank you.
I thank you, I didn't know if you meant, I couldn't, I can't remember if you mentioned them or not, but we were, you know, very lucky, I think, to be on Christmas break or winter vacation and have the high school available. That also made it available for me to go to a lot of meetings and to be there as much as I could. But I want to say, when I went into the school district, I think after our first emergency meeting, there were a lot of staff from the school district there, setting up things, moving Christmas trees, doing whatever they could to make the school as nice as they could for the families that were staying there. And, you know, all those school district employees were on their, their break as well, and, and I was just impressed in how fast they responded, and how fast they were there to, to help. And, you know, I think being able to see this whole process was incredible. And so, I will just echo the same thanks and say that I was very impressed by everyone who was involved in any way possible, how great a job they did, and just proud to be someone from Oregon City.
So I have one more thing to say. This happened at kind of a weird time, in that we were, you know, in vacation times, and a lot of senior staff had vacations. And one of the things that I, impressed me most about this thing was, you know, Tony was there for part of it, and then was on vacation, and Wyatt Parner, our finance director, stepped into Tony's role as incident commander. Chief Band was there for the beginning, and then was scheduled to be on vacation, so Captain Clear stepped in for Jim. And we had several of those things happen during this time, and it's just impressive how much, how much depth we have in our bench, that have people that can just step into different roles, and it seemed very seamless to us.
It was a team effort.
Yes. Anything to say, Tony?
I, I will just add some specifics from the city manager's report, more of just an update of where we're at, unless you'd like me to do it now.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Everybody okay with the agenda?
Yep.
Okay, so we're at PC 15-250, request for continuance readoption of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. Are there any, oh, I suppose I have to open, do I have to?
If there was anybody here who would like to speak, we would recommend that we take.
So, anybody here to speak on this?
There isn't anyone here to speak, but let the record show that there was a letter received today from the hamlet of Beaver Creek. And that has been entered into the record, thank you.
So are we continuing to a date certain? Because this is like the third time we've continued this.
We are, we're requesting a continuance to the date certain of January 20th. The Planning Commission is holding their next meeting on this on January 11. Which, it'll be their third hearing on the concept plan, so we are trying to move it forward, so that, do apologize for the continual request for continuance.
So, how much time do they have scheduled?
We don't, they have as much time as they need to get to a decision, or if someone does request a continuance, we'll deal with that as well.
Okay, because I'd like to get to this before December.
In good shape for that.
Okay.
So, can we move to continue with the date certain?
Yeah, all right.
I would move to continue.
Second.
Okay, move to continue by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner President Smith. Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So, under General Business, 15-650, Resolution 16-02, updating the pavement cut standards and drawings. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor, this is a quick item. Really, you may or you may not recall, but when we adopted the pavement maintenance utility fee, we, we, one of the directives that we got from the commission at the time was that we needed to make sure that we had high standards when utilities cut into brand-new pavements. So as a result of that, this standard was adopted. This is really a, an update of that standard, and it's, I would call it a minor update, it's really about trying to get consistent with some of the ODOT standard language that we use. We updated some detailed drawings, we clarified some language on materials. So, I'm sure you enjoyed the several pages of red lines.
Exciting stuff.
Yeah, pretty exciting stuff, but it's industry standard kind of stuff, and it's important to the quality of the work that we're getting. And it's also, the other little problem is, we found some problems with issuance of permits and confusion with some of the, some of the users or the abusers of our roadway, so we think we've fixed that a little bit. The other thing that I want to point out was, even the red line version, we looked at it between the time we submitted the staff report and today, and we found some very minor Scribner's errors, formatting, grammar, that kind of thing. So we want to even do a little more tweak, but we're hoping we can still adopt this tonight, and that they're inconsequential, and I think Katie had it up on your monitor if you needed, if you were, you know, some, some minor changes, so, but we'd like to get it adopted, so we can implement it.
So, just a quick question. So say, if we take Knight Street this summer, did, was everybody that's in that right-of-way notified that you guys were going to be in there, and if they needed to do something, they needed to do it in that timeframe?
That's our model, yeah.
Okay.
Every year, we reach out to our utility providers and let them know. And if they had, if they had to do something, they could, we would, we would allow it, but they'd have to meet a pretty high patch standard.
Okay.
Got a motion on that, Mayor?
That'd be handy.
Get, move to approve, 15-650, Resolution Number 16-02.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner President Smith. Is there any discussion, questions?
This will not increase the cost. This is just to streamline everything.
It's, no, I don't believe it will. I mean, the standards were high before, it's just clarification.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay, anybody got anything to pull out the consent agenda?
Nope.
Okay. Waiting.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So we're down to Communications. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So we have a couple of updates to provide you tonight that we'd like to pass along. On Tuesday, January 19th, we are having a Pints From the Past. It's a new series sponsored by the Museum of the Oregon Territory and the Oregon City Public Library. It'll be industrial archaeology at Willamette Falls. Rick Minor, the senior archaeologist from Heritage Research Associates, will be talking about the knowledge gained from last summer's archaeological investigations at the Oregon City Woolen Mill Foundation on the Old Blue Heron property. So once again, that'll be open to the public. It'll be Tuesday, January 19th. The doors will open at 5:30, the presentation will be at 6:30, it'll be at the Midway Public House, 1003 Seventh Avenue here in Oregon City. So we just wanted to pass that along. Next up, I'll have Mr. Underwood give an update on the train station.
Thank you. I just want to give a quick update and public announcement, that many folks have been anticipating the end of the train station project, yours truly is one of those. And we just completed that project on Monday, did the final walkthrough, and so it is going to be turned over to the tenant. And, yeah, so it's just good news, and there are tours available, if you want to contact me, I can, I can take you on a tour, a quick tour of the building.
It's like a two-hour tour?
It can be.
All right. Next, we'll have an update from Chief Band, about SeaSafe.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. So, if you remember SeaSafe, the Community Safety Advancement Fee that was passed in May, we had originally written that up to begin collection in July, but because there were some other increases, some slight increases, some just kind of essentially a cost of living kind of an increase, or inflationary increase and some other stuff, I don't remember what all it was, but we had talked about different options of kind of helping people absorb that a little bit better. We talked about graduating the fee, and we said, let's just put it off for six months, and it will begin collection in January. So we're in January, and in February, people are going to see that fee on their bill for the first time. Reminder, it's $6.50 per month. We have gotten some feedback, the business community got letters a little over a month ago, I think, about their fee, the businesses see the fee, it's part of their, they basically pay for an entire year at a time, it's captured at the business license rather than in the utility bill. We did get some feedback when that, we sent out an explanatory statement with that, a letter basically going through exactly what the fee was for, giving direction to go to our website if they wanted information. I'd say we got probably a half a dozen calls, most of them were people just mad about the fee. A couple of them ended up with my assistant, and one or two of them ended up talking to me, and we kind of explained to people what was going on, and I, everyone I talked to, I ended up winning over. One of them took me about 30 minutes. But I think with the number of, the number that went out, I, there's, I believe, over 1,000 business licenses that go out, having five or six people call up with issues, that's, I would have considered that a win. So, the other thing that we're going to do, just in terms of kind of making the message clear and accessible for people, so they understand about the project, and this isn't specific to the fee, but this is specific to the actual project that's going on at Mount Pleasant, because a lot of people, they're mad about the fee, they want an explanation about the fee, but then there's also, okay, what is this going to pay for again? And so, we have sent out an RFP, we sent three, and we're going to be picking a company essentially do a video that will look a lot like the one that you've seen for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, that in two to three minutes is going to kind of tell the whole story, kind of from the police perspective, from the public perspective, from the site perspective, so, you know, because a lot of, basically hitting on all the concerns people have, because the, the site of that school is pretty important, and we hope to have that out in February.
Did you, did you send that RFP to the media center?
Yeah.
Why not?
It did not, there's certain criteria, we essentially have somebody who we have hired to help us formulate this message, and they helped us come up with the criteria for the RFP, and they gave us the, we followed the recommendations of the three names that they gave us.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Questions?
Still have Library Director Cole give an update on the progress of the.
Yay, we need cheers, come on, let's keep it going.
Good evening, Commissioners. Well, this week, we didn't have a meeting because too many of our building committee members were still iced in, most importantly, our project manager who actually leads the meetings. But I was able to tour the site to see what had been done in the two weeks while I'd been gone, and get up on the second floor. So I wanted to provide you with a view of what the second floor looks like right now, since this is not a view you currently can have. So, this is the first floor. You're looking towards 7th Street, and that's the children's area, and this is part of the open foyer. And then that's looking back towards Jefferson, and then back towards 6th, and that's going to be the community room, the elevator you can see, and the restrooms will be back there, further into the community room. Now we're upstairs, and that's right at the edge of what will overlook the foyer, and then, of course, the back end of the Carnegie. You can see that the roof of the Carnegie is not very attractive. That'll all be cleaned up, and although, I mean, it will still look like a roof, the frit that is the pattern that will be on the glass that goes around there, we've, we just had a meeting with the artist who we will enter into a contract with, who will do the frit pattern. artist who we will enter into a contract with, who will do the frit pattern and the sculpture in the foyer. And the idea of the frit is to kind of block some of that roof without blocking light and without blocking the higher view. So that's what we were talking with him about today because he needs to get working on that because glass is one of the things they need to start working on ordering.
So the mechanical stuff is not moving?
No, a bunch of the mechanical stuff will change because we'll have different mechanical stuff.
What about the chimney?
I don't think they would take away the chimney, even though it's a gas fireplace.
Chimneys stay in, but they're going to put, update all that equipment on that roof.
Yeah. So, I mean, it will just look a lot better, but it will still look like a roof.
Are they going to change the reinforcing on the chimney, Brian?
Yeah, the chimney's going to be worked on.
Okay.
There's a reason why that reinforcement's on there.
No, I'm pretty sure there is.
Really good looking, isn't it?
Yeah.
And it's very industrial.
Yeah. And then this is just the same view out over what will be the open foyer.
Wow.
Yeah. And then, this is towards Sixth. And so we're looking towards what will be the internet area and the teen area right now.
Nice.
And then we're looking the other direction and that is towards the adult area.
So I assume they're putting concrete on that pan deck, right?
Yeah, yeah. So they're, they're laying the floor boxes and then they'll put that in next Tuesday. They'll pour next Tuesday.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting.
Oh, wow.
Back towards Jefferson. Just more towards Jefferson. This is important because those are going to be offices. Oh, joy, offices. And I just kept going around. And this is nice because you get the kind of that treehouse view that we had talked about and wanted. Elevator. So this is just standing back a little farther from that area that we saw before, just to kind of get that feel
Oh, wow.
of space because, you know.
Look at the Armington.
Yeah.
Armington.
Yeah. So the frit will only be around the foyer part. So this would be clear glass here, which will be nice. So these are going to be where the two smaller meeting rooms are. You know, one is more like a ten-person meeting room and one is more like the makerspace. So that's what these two are. This is Vanna pointing at her new office.
Ah.
This is not all my, these will be two offices, a restroom and a stairway if you go all the way to the brick wall back there. Speaking of brick, the bricklayers have arrived.
Ooh.
And I got to put on some brick. So I just thought you might like to see. Excellent library director, hard at work. Yay. That's it.
Looks like he didn't fill in that edge very well.
I didn't. You could tell which ones I did. But, you know, it was really fun and it was great to meet those guys and go out there, so.
It's really coming along.
It's coming along, yeah.
And so lastly, just an update on the Berry Hill and Forest Edge apartments. I can't agree more with what's been said by the Commission and the Mayor so far tonight in thanking all the organizations that came together to assist during this emergency event, as well as of how proud I am of every staff member in the city and couldn't echo that more. Whether they were involved at the event or not, I believe that the city continued to function very efficiently over those several weeks while many of the executive team and several staff were committed to the emergency event. We took down the emergency operations center on Monday. That does not mean that our work is done. We will continue to monitor the site. There'll be follow-up work that has to occur with the property owners on the site, as well as some of the utility discussions. They're going to need to go on and continue, as well as monitoring the, the condition of the site through the remainder of this summer, this winter. And so there's an unknown there that we are still dealing with. So we'll continue to do that. We evacuated, there were fifty-two units in total, ten at Berry Hill, forty-two down at Forest Edge, fifty-one of which were occupied at the beginning of this event, with the assistance of our faith-based groups throughout the community, citizens taking their own initiative, residents of that facility, the assistance of the Red Cross. At this point, the Red Cross facility has closed with the school. They have, they have left the incident. The, the Commission made the decision and we did, we did house five families currently. And so we'll continue to do that for twenty-one days was the maximum that we were going to, we're going to do that for. So that has occurred. So the site is now vacant below, at Forest Edge as well as up at Berry Hill. All things considered on an event like this, I think it was amazing to watch the teamwork, the decision-making and the execution. And as unfortunate as this was and the impact that it had on the residents and during the time of year that it was, I think it was very well handled in the execution and our ability to get folks out of there safely. At this point, we, we did talk a little bit, the Oregon City Landside Relief Fund has been, has been sent, set up and that's being administered through the Rotary Club. So we do appreciate all their assistance on that. Lewis and Clark Banks are assisting with that. Folks can mail in, show up at a Lewis and Clark Bank, donate to the Oregon City Landside Relief Fund. And there's also a link still available on the Oregon City website that would get you to be able to donate through there as well. So unless there are additional questions-
And victims can apply for that assistance where?
Also, on our website, there's also a link that they can download an application. They can come into the City Hall and get an application. We've also emailed it to all the email addresses that we had on file. And they can contact the city, just here at City Hall or myself, and get that information.
Okay, thanks.
That concludes my Commission updates for tonight.
So the, the name I was trying to get to was Paula Negley from the Oregon Red Cross. And I'm sure I forgot someone in the long list of other folks that were in attendance. Tom Hurt from the Church of Oregon City was, was very helpful in, in organizing volunteers and, and other kinds of things. So I, I have to apologize if I missed somebody out there. That doesn't mean we don't appreciate it. Just means that my memory was not too good during this whole thing. So, thanks.
So is it clear now that the apartments that have been vacated are vacated permanently?
Permanently is not the word we're using. The word we're using is, is that until we, the, the property owners can submit some kind of possible repairs to their various properties that can meet city code and go through planning, that there will be no reoccupation as of now. Did that sum that up correctly?
They were deemed dangerous buildings. They're still dangerous buildings. That doesn't prevent the property owner from taking steps, you know, and what that is, we don't know.
So at some point in the, had the property owner at Forest Edge, has he put his gate up yet?
I'm not, I can, I was down there two hours ago and no. But he has no trespassing signs all over the place. The signs say you'll be arrested if you're trespassing. I was down there with Bruce Payne, the manager, and he actually asked me if we went and walked through the, the lowest building. He wanted to look and see if anybody had broken in because that's been one of his concerns. They have had no theft. There was one apartment that we found that had an open door and nobody had been inside there. He is planning, I think they have every vehicle is out that was down below. He said that everybody, to his knowledge, has everything that was out of there. There were two people that kind of took their time. And he is putting a fence up. He made it sound like it was going to be inside of the next week, but he definitely planned on, he was doing some work, he was getting the, some food out of the fridges and that kind of stuff.
Right.
And then his plan after getting all that done, he was going to have some day labor down there to help him. And then he was going to put a fence up.
With a gate, right?
Yeah. He didn't say gate, he said fence. I'm assuming he'd have a gate on it, but that's-
Well, yeah.
He's talked to, he has talked about a gate. And right now, we've left the Public Works barricades down there, told them we'd pick them up on Friday. So he needed, he either needed to get more barricades or a gate.
Okay. Obviously, we still need to have a way to get either police or fire vehicles down there if we need to. So, I remember he just, he's not going to put a fence up. I would assume that would be a gate. The other question is, what about PGE? Have they made any decisions about what they're going to do?
PG is well aware of the situation and our concerns. They're continuing to work with the property owner. They're not as concerned about having to remove the equipment that's down on that lower site. They have a plan for disconnect if need be. So we've disconnected our water from the, the lower level of the Forest Edge apartments. We're still working through the Berry Hill. It's a little more challenging and we're not quite sure if we're going to disconnect or just monitor.
And what's the status of the stormwater at Forest Edge?
We received an email today from the Forest Edge Department's engineer wanting to meet and we're directing them to sit down with us to have a kind of a pre, pre-application meeting to figure out what it is that they're thinking. Because they talked about, they wanted to have a, a meeting to talk about how to reestablish utilities. And that leads me to believe that they may be thinking, once they reestablish utilities, they may, that may be enough. And we want to make sure we're clear about our understanding of the situation.
So just to, just to explain to the, to the Commission, for those of you who would haven't been updated all the time, one of the reasons that we did the evacuation for a judge is because we lost the water line and the stormwater line. The general conclusion is, is that if, if they can safely reconnect the stormwater line, that's even as a temporary fix, that prevents water from running down in, under the road and continuing to erode that space. But as far as reconnecting anything else, it's going to be a while.
Yeah, I mean, their, their water, their, we know their wastewater line is severed and would need to be repaired. And that same area is a water line and a storm line. So it'd be nice to fix the storm line so that it's not creating more, you know, problems with the slide. But the other utilities and any utilities in that access road are, are in a state of change beyond what most construction materials and methods can handle. So it doesn't seem like a long-term fix. So, yeah, I don't see them being inhabited until there's a solution to the slide.
Okay. Is that it?
And the remaining, the remaining families have found permanent housing, except for the five-
So, you know, that's kind of an ongoing target as well. For the most part, the fifty-one displaced families have found some form of housing. They've been working with the County Housing Authority on several situations. Others have found their own. We have five housed at, at a local hotel and they're, they've got housing for a week with the option, assuming they continue to make progress on finding housing. And, you know, we don't have any concerns at the hotel, then they would, they, they could get up to an additional two weeks. And then we're, we're having a couple other folks that, because of the holidays, were kind of off our radar and hadn't communicated with us, that are now saying, yeah, I was staying with my folks, but that's going to end, or I was staying in an apartment that only has, you know, with a friend, that only has ten days of allowable for that. So we don't want, you know, some other apartment dweller to get, you know, into trouble with their, with their renter. So we're, we're taking those one at a time and considering those. But, you know, we're looking at pretty much the twenty-first of January as being about, I mean, it's a very generous situation to be able to, to house these. It costs us, you know, fair amount. I think we're about $7,000 a week for housing for the families that we've been housing. So we can't sustain that.
So just to be clear, during, you know, the emergency operations meetings, as we worked towards finding a way to take care of these folks after the Red Cross left, because typically in a situation like this, the Red Cross will stay for up to thirty days. But unfortunately, we didn't have that much time because we didn't have another place to, another reasonable place to move the shelter to. We looked at some other options and between the amount, we only had about five days to actually make that happen. And to get volunteers and people trained and get all the resources together, it looked like it was going to cost a lot more than it did to do this option. And so I think it was Commissioner Shaw and I authorized the city manager to use that money out of the, out of the contingency funds that we have in the budget to pay into the Oregon City Emergency Relief Fund that's been managed by these churches. And they're the ones that are administering the vouchers and that, that situation. So they have a specific set of rules that all these folks have to abide by and all that sort of thing. So that's how it worked out. And the one thing I do want to mention is Paula Negley, who was the overall Red Cross person for this particular site, did say that Oregon City went well above and beyond what most municipalities do in a situation like this. So I think we've done all that we can and we will continue to monitor the situation. So who wants to go first? Commissioner Shaw, you got anything?
Well, I can just play what you're going to, because I was going to mention that, that Paula had said that she's never seen a city reach like this and accommodate, because usually when the Red Cross shelters down, we're done. But in this case here, here, the city has stepped forward and accommodated these five families for another three weeks or so. They get a housing voucher and a food voucher and, you know, so we're doing the best we can. And she recognized, she's just, she just never sees that. So that's a testimony to this community. Second thing is, I just want to congratulate Eric for the train depot. So it's one off the list. That's all I got, Mayor.
Commissioner President Smith?
Ooh. Attended a Clackamas Heritage Partners meeting and I won't go into all the details of that. It's the end of the, the two thousand and fifteen year. So CHP created a report for the last year. I believe that already has gone to Scott. The good news is that since we renewed our agreement with Clackamas Heritage Partners, they have put a huge effort into making headway, I think, on repairs that we knew needed to come with the building and working with the city to try to put money back into the building that we were all very concerned about. I think they've made a really incredible effort into getting the museum back on track, the, the End of the Oregon Trail back on track. Their visitation is way up. I think from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and fifteen, attendance went up about nineteen percent. All of their, in terms of ticket sales, gift shop, all those kind of things are going up as well.
What are they attributing that to?
They're attributing that mainly to being open every day. And I think for a long time, and we've talked about this with the tourism issue, having our museum facilities open on a regular schedule that everyone knows is consistent has been a huge challenge. CHP was willing to take the risk, I think, to put the money that they were making into staying open seven days a week, when I think at the time, they weren't sure that was going to pay off. Because that's a lot of resources to put into keeping a building open every day that may not attract a lot of visitors. But by doing so, I think people know that they can, are starting to be aware that they can go down there throughout the week. Not only are they, I think not only has that helped, but they are also focusing on being a lot more proactive in reaching out to seniors, school groups, other group tour kinds of opportunities. And that has increased significantly. They've also started soliciting, or they've also started offering a opportunity for schools and other organizations worldwide to be able to get presentations through Skype. to be able to get presentations through Skype from presenters at the End of the Oregon Trail. So, if a school...
You say prisoners or...?
I said what?
From presenters?
Presenters.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, my voice is going. So, basically, they're offering the ability for a school group in any part of the world to have an Oregon City End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center presentation be made over Skype to a school group, anywhere. So, they're doing a lot of things that I think have added to that increase. And they're putting that, you know, into expanding the center in terms of expanding its partnerships with the Grand Ron Tribe and doing new exhibits that I think honor the entire history of Oregon City, not the pioneer, just the pioneer histories. So, I think their partnership right now with the Grand Ron Tribe has been a huge step forward in the city honoring its native history. And so, I just... I have good things to say about what's going on at CHP. I feel good about the direction they're going in and I think that will continue. But if you have any specific questions or want to see the annual report, I think you could get that from Parks Department or Scott.
Commissioner Mengler?
Commissioner Paul.
Commissioner Shaw and I attended a recognition event for volunteers sponsored by the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. And it was just great to see many, many volunteers in our city and what they do and how involved the business community is with nonprofits and volunteering their time in our community.
Was that the Christmas event?
Uh, no.
No, just the volunteer...
Yeah. It was at the Answorth House.
Oh, okay.
It was last week.
Yeah, no.
Your name was called. We applauded for you.
Okay. So, I have two things. One, upcoming in February, we have the annual chamber dinner auction gala thing. And I'm supposed to give out a couple of awards. And in years past, or last year, I had a pretty good idea where I was headed with that. This year, I'm not quite so sure. So, I'm asking the Commission to give me some ideas, nominations for at least one Citizen of the Year over the past year. So, if you guys could think about that and give that to me, I'd appreciate it. And then, I've been watching this series on Netflix called... What was it called? High Profit. And it's about a town in Breckenridge in Colorado that's going through the transition or that goes through the transition from recreational marijuana to... From medical marijuana to recreational and how that interplayed between their city council and these different folks and how the community responded and other kinds of things. And it got me to thinking that rather than wait and be sort of caught off guard, that even though we are going to vote in November of this year, that we should start working on time, place and manner restrictions or how we're going to zone this or whatever the case may be and let it go through the planning commission. Maybe we need to have a joint work session with the planning commission. What's that giggle for?
I'm sorry, a joint?
You were so serious about it.
Eric didn't think I was that way.
Write that one down, Eric. You can use that tomorrow.
So, we can, you know, kind of get started and have the time to work through that process. So, if that, you know, if the vote does go one way or the other and we at least have had the time to work through those kind of regulations. And if one of these other lawsuits that's going on in other parts of the state were to reject the theory that the federal law precludes us from issuing a business license, then we have had the time and had the thoughtful conversation about how we go from there to here. Is everybody in general agreement on that?
Yes.
Better be proactive.
Yes, absolutely.
And with that, that's all I have.